Honored Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and in this one.
Thank you, sir.
Item four on the agenda is items of community interest. Sharon Hayes?
We, yes, sir, we do have two tonight. This is the week of the 72nd Annual Frontier Days rodeo. The celebration did kick off last weekend. We had a trail ride, a parade, and a street dance in the downtown area. And rumor is the mayor was on a horse.
I was, I was bringing in the hurt, not bringing in the herd.
And then topped it off with a fire truck.
Fire truck, great.
Rodeo starts tonight, though, and it runs all week. I think it runs through Saturday. I think the show starts eight o'clock, or the rodeo starts at eight o'clock. So I encourage everyone to take advantage of that. And the other thing we have is Sherry Park. And it is 70 years old, but it doesn't look like it. It has a new look or a new facelift. So we're gonna, the pool did open yesterday to the public. And we're gonna have a ribbon cutting this Friday at four o'clock. So those of you who haven't driven by and look at it, I encourage you to do it. It's amazing looking. It doesn't even look like the same pool. So anyway, hope to see everybody there for that.
Is there any attire recommended for this event Friday?
I believe it would be Hawaiian shirts.
Hawaiian shirts, okay. I hear all kinds of commitment in the room for Hawaiian shirts. Is that worse, wine? You good? Okay, thank you, sir. All right, any other items of community interest? Okay, item five on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Five A is consider approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on May the 28th of 2019. We do have a motion on the floor for approval by Jeff Robinson, second by Mayor Pro Tim Wilder. Any discussion on that before we call for a vote? Hearing none, if you'd indicate yea or nay at this time. Passes unanimously. Item six on the agenda is consent agenda items. Would anybody, does anybody have a need or desire to pull any of those out individually? Hearing none, we'll call for a motion at this time. Motion on the floor by Mayor Pro Tim Wilder, second by Kevin Cleveland. Any discussion on the item before we call for a vote? Hearing none. Indicate yea or nay at this time. Consider agenda passes unanimously. Item seven on the agenda is public hearings. Seven A is to hold a public hearing. Consider approval of ordinance O 2019-30 for zoning district change from R1 one-family residential to R1 one-family residential with conditional use permit, CUP, for an accessory structure exceeding 200 square feet on a 0.0, 0.307 acre tract located at 619 Jamison Street and being described as being a part of Block Two Yeoman's Edition, City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, ZCH 2019-0015. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Stan Hamburg, City Planner. As you can see here, this is a residential lot that's just to the northeast of the Sheriff's Office jail system there. We did receive a complaint on this property back in 2018. The owner came in, at that time it was, it was putting up structure without permit. The owner did come in, talked to staff to figure out what he needed to do, went away with that information, and then we didn't really hear back from them for about a year. Came back out, visited with them. They've, since then, come in, sat down with us, gotten all the information in that we need for the, the building permit, started that process. During that review, what, one of the items that was, was needed was a conditional use permit due to the size of the accessory structure. So that's what we're here to do, is look at that. Since the project was built without a permit, there are a couple of things that don't meet normal standards. They are very, very, very minor. There are some things that we could bless with a conditional use permit if you so wish. The Planning and Zoning Commission did go ahead and recommend approval of the project with a couple of caveats, four to one at their last meeting. Namely, that was to go ahead and take the, the workshop that you see there at the back, that portion there, which is actually a four-sided workshop building. The portion that's in front of that is an open-sided carport that, that faces to, open to the west there. So they wanted that to, to go ahead and have a, they were talking about a masonry provision for that. Actually, our codes do allow, since the house itself, which you can kind of see the corner of it there with the address on it, is a sided house with, with siding on it, that that accessory structure can match that. So that is what staff had recommended. They were okay with that. The other provision that they had requested was that the areas to come into and park for the, for the carport in the back, go ahead and be paved, as would be standard. The, the applicant was a little distressed by that due to the, the large sizes of it. But of course, those would have been the things we would have talked about at the initial building permit process. So those were primarily the conditions that had been placed on it by the commission. We would go ahead and have them come in, complete the building permit process, and get an issued permit, which would be done after we get the conditional use permit and any conditions required by that permit. Then they would go ahead and finish making the project compliant with that building permit and move forward from there before they could occupy that, that building. We'd like to go ahead and recommend giving them 30 days to get those corrections into the building permit. And then at that point, they would move through the, the building permit process with standard inspections and everything to get that, that completed. If you have any questions, I'm here. I believe the applicant is also here.
Questions for staff on item seven A?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Had, had the applicant, before he ever started construction on this, brought these plans forward? Is this something that would have been approved?
So normally, we would have obviously pointed out the, the masonry requirements, or at least the siding requirement in this particular instance. And so as is, no, he would have had to make those changes to the building permit before it could have been approved. If the project stayed the same, therefore the same square footage and everything, he would have been required to go through the conditional, conditional use permit similar to what he's going through now. But, you know, we would have caught some things like it is a, a couple of inches over the, you know, a building line, not a property line, but a building line that's normal for accessory structures, things like that. We would have dissuaded the metal siding that's down the back of the carport portion of that and everything else. So as is, no, sir, it would not have.
I have one other question, that's okay. You stated that y'all spoke with the, the applicant, told him what he needed to do, and then a year went by. During that year, was there additional work done on this project?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
I'm not sure how far along it was when, when code went out and first, first surveyed the project a year ago.
Okay. Mayor Pro Tim?
It came to our attention because of a complaint. What was the complaint about?
That there was a building going up, and they weren't sure if there were any permits on it. They had called to see if there were permits, and we couldn't find any. So code went out to check. Sure enough, it was a new building, and that there, there were no building permits that had been pulled on it.
Second question is if, assume we don't grant the conditional use permit, then what, then what happens?
So at that point, they, they still have the obligation to bring the, the building into compliance so they can bring it down where it doesn't require the conditional use permit. They can go ahead and, and do the siding and do a lot of, all those other things that would typically be required to get it below the threshold for a conditional use permit, or just go ahead and, and work at removing the entire building.
Other questions? Clarification on item three under the suggestions for, can you clarify paving? Is that improved surface? Or tell me exactly what paving means, just for the record?
Sure, so for us, the paving typically means concrete or asphalt paving. We would also consider some alternatives. You don't necessarily save money on them, but you have, we do have any kind of hardscape surface, but not permeable such as gravel, you know, road mix, things like that.
Very well. Other questions for staff before we have a public hearing? Stick around, Mr. Hamburg, let me have you circle back around. This time, we'll open up a public hearing on item seven A specifically. If anybody would like to come forward at this time, please do so. How are you, sir? Well, I'll tell you what, come on up and let's have your name and address, and we'll give you three.
Mike Markalonis, I live a couple houses down from, from that house.
Well, you have three minutes, sir.
All right. All I have to say is I don't see anything wrong with it. I mean, it's a nice-looking, you know, building that they built. It's nice, it's their property, they improved their property, the look of it. And I really don't see anything wrong with it. You know, I lived in my house for 32 years, and it just added, you know, better, better view from my backyard to his yard. And I don't see anything wrong with it.
Appreciate your comments.
All I got to say.
Thank you. Anybody else on item seven A? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing at this time. Any further discussion on the item, Council? Mr. Hamburg, just for the record, you come up and go over the recommendations one more time, just to make sure we're clear there.
Somehow my, my, one in my packet did not get printed, so I'm going to do one on my phone.
You can borrow mine if you need to.
So we are, we are recommending that within 30 days, the applicant will submit revisions to proposed plans and obtain approval for building permits, including any electrical already installed on, on the premise. He's done a lot of that. We just want to make sure that anything that's covered by tonight's hearing is included in that submittal. That the exterior construction of the 340 square foot shop shall be siding to match the house. That could be hardy plank, it could be exactly the siding that's on the house, just so that it has that same visual, visual look and feel. All surfaces used for vehicle parking under their carport and maneuvering between the carport and the street shall be paved. Again, any of those products that are allowed for paving would be, would be perfectly fine. It's not a fire lane, it doesn't need to be, you know, eight inches of concrete or anything like that. And accessory structures shall not be used for dwelling or business purposes, except as allowed for home occupation, which meets all applicable requirements. The structure may not be occupied for any purpose until the building permit is finalled. And so we've moved from here, and at, within 30 days, we're asking that they get that new information in so that the building inspections department can go ahead, review that, hopefully get them an issued permit. And then they can go and make any of these, these fixes that we, so within 30 days, they should be able to get out there and, and get these fixes made, is what the goal is. And then start working on that as, as they can.
Okay. Questions for staff? Okay. Call for a motion at this time on the item?
I'm making the motion that we approve the ordinance for a conditional use permit.
As presented?
As presented.
Motion on the floor by Curtis Tucker, to hear second. Second by Kevin Cleveland. Any further discussion? Clarification needed on the item before we call for a vote?
Yes, sir, is that motion with the recommendations that he just listed?
With everything that the...
Okay.
With the five stipulations, is that correct, Mr. Tucker?
Correct.
Mr. Cleveland, your second, still stand.
Sure.
Okay. Great for clarification, any other questions? Okay, we'll call for a vote at this time. Seven A passes four to one. Seven B on the agenda is to hold a public hearing. Consider approval of ordinance O 2019-31 for a zoning district change from AG Agricultural to C1 Commercial with a conditional use permit, CUP, for an eating establishment with drive-through service and convenience store with gasoline sales on a 3.25 acre tract at the corner of FM 920 and Rick Williamson Memorial Highway, and described as Lot 1-AR Block B, Hobson Industrial Park, Section 2, City of Weatherford, Parker County, Texas, ZCH 2019-0016. Welcome back.
Thank you, sir, Stan Hamburg, City Planner. This is the corner there, Rick Williamson and 920, part of the old Hobson Industrial Park. It was replatted and cleaned up after the loop went through. So it is a platted property, ready to go as far as all of that is concerned. They will come in, hopefully after this, and start the building permit process. We require a conditional use permit here because we're one of those wonderful old towns that has some of these old cut-up pieces of land, especially around our downtown area, that make drive-throughs and things like that challenging. So if we need to, we bring it through this process to, to make sure and bless that. This is not one of those, this is pretty much a no-brainer. They have plenty of space here. You actually see, I highlighted in yellow over here, that's the actual drive-through portion. Everything else that you see there are fire lane areas, plenty of parking and maneuvering areas. There's no issues with escape lanes for people getting in and out of that. They've got lots of stacking space off of the roads, which again, you know, closer into Main Street and those types of areas, we worry about them backing up on the roads. So staff is fully supportive of this particular conditional use permit. It will be for a, a quick stop convenience store with a drive-thru, I believe, going to be tacos on that for the restaurant.
Okay, any questions for staff before we have a public hearing? Mr. Hamburg, thank you. This time, we'll have a public hearing on item seven B specifically. If anybody would like to speak on that item, please come forward at this time. How are you this evening? Good to see if we can have your name and address, and we'll have, you are client rep?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Jordan Bishop. I'm with Jordan Engineering, civil engineer for this project here on behalf of the applicant. Stand did a great job summarizing our request, and really just wanted to make myself available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you for doing that. Any questions for Mr. Bishop? Appreciate your willingness to be here, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
This time, we will, anybody else on item seven B? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing on this item. Call for a motion. Do have a motion on the floor for approval by Mayor Pro Tim Wilder, second by Kevin Cleveland. Any further discussion or questions on the item before we call for a vote? Hearing none, indicate yea or nay at this time, please. Passes unanimously. Item eight on the agenda is citizens' comments on non-agenda items. Anybody here that'd like to speak to these on, under item eight? Seeing none. Council, what I'd like to do before we move to number nine, staff reports, is ask for your approval to go ahead and hear item 11 and conduct our executive session. Is anybody opposed to shifting our agenda just a little bit for tonight? Okay. This time, we will go into recess at 6:47 PM to hear item 11 pursuant to Chapter 551, Texas Government Code VTCS Open Meetings Law, in accordance with the authority contained in Number One, Section 551-071, consultation with attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter, ESD 3, contract, and Section 551-087, economic development negotiation edgewise eight. We'll be in recess until we're out of executive session. Back in session at 8:03 PM. Item 12 on the agenda is action on executive session items. To take action if necessary pursuant to Chapter 551, Texas Government Code VTCS Open Meetings Law, in accordance with the authority contained in Section 1551-071, consultation with attorney on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter, ESD 3, contract, and Number Two, Section 551-087, economic development negotiations edgewise eight. Council?
On, we're taking no action on Section 551-071. And then I make a motion that we accept the negotiations presented, the contract negotiations presented to us in executive session as they were presented.
Motion on the floor by Curtis Tucker. As presented, do I hear a second?
I second that.
Okay. Second by Heidi Wilder. Sorry. Any discussion on the items or clarification needed? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote at this time. Passes unanimously. Item nine on the agenda, moving back up, is staff reports. Nine A is discuss and consider proposed changes to the council policy manual. Sharon Hayes?
Yes, sir. I think Melinda had put the information in your packet. It had the detailed changes that we made. Most of the ones, the comments we got were more housekeeping, and those we just accepted. I think they're highlighted in yellow, you can see where those were. There were a few of the comments that we were concerned about changing or removing. And she did put comments out beside to explain what that position was. And so we would like the council to go back and review those and let us know if you're okay with those. And the other thing that she did put in there was an example of what a social media policy would look like. Up until this point, we've always utilized the city's personnel manual for that. And this one is really geared more towards elected officials. So this isn't the final one, but just give us an idea if you are comfortable with the approach that this takes. Again, that's just kind of for your benefit. So what we would ask is that you look at these, give us any comments back to Melinda, and have those back by June 25th. We would then have this on your, that meeting after that, so the first July meeting, July 9th meeting, so we can go ahead and, and accept it and adopt it, so.
Council, appreciate your feedback on the document, a lot of work and staff. Thanks for compiling all the feedback. And, and any questions for Ms. Hayes on the direction with this? Just update today, no action required.
Questions for Ms. Hayes, but I do have, I would like to go through the document real quick to hit some of the red highlights that are asking for clarification.
Very well.
And get y'all's opinion over a couple of them that, that I'd pointed out or had recommendations or clarify why I'd suggested. In Article One, Section Three, it previously stated that the mayor may limit each council member to five, well, hold on, I think I skipped over the first one. No, that's the first one. The mayor may limit each council member to five minutes to ensure efficiency of time. I'd recommended we move, we remove that piece. It's just my opinion, the rest of the statement, that number three paragraph is trying to promote open conversation among, and equal conversation among all council members. But then at the end, it wraps it up by saying we should limit their conversation. I felt like it was counterproductive to what the rest of the, the paragraph was saying. So that was, that was my request. So I'd be happy to get y'all's requests, as whether y'all felt like that should be removed or left in.
Council? It's a great question. That's why we're doing it. Thoughts, opinions?
I made the same exact, I, I made the same exact suggestion because I feel exactly as Kevin does. It's, it makes a counterproductive statement if you have that in there.
Gentlemen?
I'm absolutely good with taking that out. I think when you look at the, the first part of the paragraph where it says the mayor will preserve order and decorum, and will acquire council members engaged in debate to limit discussion. So I think that gives the, the mayor the gist of what we really want. I'm fine with taking it out.
Good feedback.
Expediting on, let's see, Section 2.5. I had made a suggestion that we remove, previously stated, avoid reference to personalities and refrain from impugning the integrity or motives of any council member or staff member in his or her argument or vote. I don't think that the entire sentence is what I had problems with. The, the part that really jumped out to me was avoid reference to personalities. I recognize that we probably need to be very respectful of each other and staff. So the, the sentence is trying to address that. But if you watch our state legislator argue, argue, the term reference to personalities is used against them repeatedly. Anytime you bring up a name, the Speaker of the House will say, please refrain from using personalities. Anytime you try to reference a previous vote where someone had voted in it and they would state a name advertising saying Sid Miller was at the committee meeting and voted, he would instantly cut you off and say, please refrain from using personalities. So I want to make sure we never end up in a situation where we're not allowed to even talk about the people that are making decisions. So I would be fine with just removing avoid references to personalities out of that and leaving the remaining piece.
Comments?
Say that again, Kevin, make sure I followed you. You would be fine with what?
Just removing avoid references to personalities and leaving refrain from impugning the integrity or motives of council members or staff in his or her arguments. So just remove those first, avoid references to personalities.
Tell me again where, because I think I'm looking at the wrong statement.
Being sex, Article Two, Number Five.
Okay. Because there's another reference over in Article Three, Paragraph One.
Correct.
Correct, and I'll, I'll address that one too, I had that one on my list.
As far as Article Two, Number Five? I'm sorry.
I, I think I understand what they're trying to say here. And I know it could be abused in the way that you're saying. But I also think that, out of respect for each other, the citizens that might be here, the staff, I kind of agree with having that statement in there. I think to, to, to go against that statement, to somehow violate that statement, it's more than just referring to the person. I mean, it's, it's specifically saying you're somehow questioning their motives, their integrity in what they're saying or doing. So I think I understand having that in there.
Are we okay with that as presented by Councilman Cleveland? Avoid reference to... Avoid reference to personalities being removed? Is that what I'm hearing or not overall?
I didn't take it, that's, that's not the way they, they were looking at leaving it. Is that correct?
I, I was looking at leaving it as it's presented.
And that was your, you're okay with that?
Mine was to remove it.
Removal, okay.
I felt like we should remove at least that first piece, but leave the remaining.
Okay.
I had struck, struck it out as well, the entire thing, because I thought the last sentence said council members will respect other members' position, opinion, and will work together for future councils. I thought that was a more direct action, and the other is a counter, it's an avoidance action. So I think that that duplicates that, and I liked taking the entire thing out.
Okay. Well, we're split down the middle on that tonight, so we're going to move on. We can come back to that. Y'all think about that. Go ahead, Mr. Cleveland.
All right. Moving on to what Councilman Curtis Tucker just referenced, which was Article 3, oh, did I pass one?
Yeah, you passed one.
Paragraph 1.
Let's treat to that one. That's the one I was going to. Article 3, Section 1, the last, last sentence, debate on policy is healthy, debate on personalities is not. I'm not, I'm not trying to get us up here starting to fight, but that to me just seems like, almost like a philosophy or like a Buddha statement in a policy, and it just didn't seem like a, it felt like it was taking the policy and it was just making general statements about what is a good thing to do. It didn't seem like a policy statement. So it just, it just didn't fit on, to me. It just seemed like a life lesson, didn't really fit in the policy, so.
I'll give you that. I, I think I, I see what you're saying. It, it's, it's an editorial comment.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that whoever wrote these has worked with a council somewhere. There was a lot of, there was some bad stuff going on.
At a different time.
And, and we've been, you know, at least the years that I've been here, we've been blessed not to have that, or we've had enough respect for one another not to have that. So, yeah, it seemed a little, like you said, editorial and even redundant, so.
I also had to have it struck.
Great. We're good there.
Okay. Item Number 6, moving down. It reads, council members shall address the entire council and shall not sing out a single member of council, the audience, or staff. That one just doesn't make any sense. We talk to individuals all the time. We talk to each other one-on-one. To me, that one didn't make sense to have in there. I requested that one be struck.
Sharon, can you maybe enlighten us on the thinking behind that?
You may not even want to know why that was put in there in the first place.
Yeah, and I think Councilman Robinson had a very-
Because it sounds good.
Yeah.
I'll give you an example. Do you remember a very uncomfortable moment where a citizen pointed at you and had specific remarks?
Well, yes. And, and so I totally, I totally think that shouldn't get to happen, because I understand the uncomfortableness of that being done.
Okay. What do I want to do on this?
Well, but, but this is not saying what people that come up and address us.
Yeah, it's really not addressing them.
This is us, it's, so I don't say, well, look here, Kevin, you, I make my, my point, addressing the whole council, make my point, not making something directly at you is the way I take this.
Yeah.
And I think that, I think that could be a good thing to have that in there personally.
Yeah. I, I agree.
A lot of these rules, 99 out of 100 council meetings, we won't even need, but in, in, in the event that there were something.
Mayor Proton.
I, I was with him about striking it, just because if there was a, a point that Jeff makes great points all the time, and we want to reference something, I, I kind of didn't want to not be.
See, I don't take this as, as referring to something like that. I mean, I think to say, okay, I agree with what Councilman Cleveland just said, or, you know, I, I don't think that's meaning, that's what the meaning is.
And I apologize, I think we're probably suffering with probably mine and Heidi's overanalyzing legal contracts and picking apart what people will use against you.
You know, I think it's funny, we're sitting here, but we're kind of agreeing, because I think I can still say, well, Kevin, you know, I didn't really agree with that statement, and, and we can discuss why, but, but with this, it's not to single you out with a, an oration or something.
Or personal attack.
A personal attack.
And I think that, that is exactly what the intent is, so that if you disagree, that it doesn't become one of those things where it's back and forth.
Again, I think 90% of this was created in a different culture than we have today.
It was.
But the other thing to keep in mind is that there need to be tools in this, in this policy or in this, this, this document to protect if the culture of this council-
Because we may not always be the council.
Policies are created not for, just for today, but for future uses. And not only does it protect fellow council members, it protects the staff potentially against chaos. And so, wants to make sure we're thinking long-term, not just about what we look like today. So are we, can we come to agreement on this, or do you want to move on?
Well, I agree with myself on this.
Great. We'll move on now. And that's okay.
Please refrain from using personalities.
What's next, Councilman Cleveland?
Skipping on to council staff. Y'all had asked for clarification, and this was not anything I had put on here, in Council Staff Relations, item Number 1. You guys had, had asked some questions of us if we understood that. I get what you guys are trying to say, but could, I think both of them are confusing to me trying to read. I almost think the original was more clear than the second repeat, the, I don't know if you guys, you have the, yeah, you got the original.
I can tell you what the intent was, and we can go back and revisit that, but if there's an agenda item on there and you just have a question, like tonight we had public carings on there, if you have a question that's very specific about that, going through me to get to the planner probably didn't make a lot of sense. So if you just have a question on something like that, then go ahead and contact him. If you have a problem with the agenda item, then it just needs to go to the manager.
I'll tell you why I like Number 1 as it was originally written. Number 1 as it's originally written, I personally like going to you for everything, even if it's going to you saying, I have a question on this, I know Brad, or I know whoever is in charge of this, would you like me to go speak to them? It still puts you in the loop of the questions, and it still has you authorizing me to go to staff that works for you. I like that setup.
Okay.
To me, it prevents a lot of chaos of people just running over to, and it doesn't take any more than a phone call to ask that question.
I, I agree with what Kevin is saying.
I, I agree the vast majority of the time, but, but I would like to include possibly James and Brad in, in that, because definitely not going to people that are under city manager or assistant city manager level. But, but there's times that, you know, you, we're researching something, and Sharon may be off in a meeting or something like that, or, or even sometimes it might be an item that we've been working on, that we know that James or Brad may be the one that's really headed it up more so.
Okay, we can change that.
So can, can we leave that if, or if you would consider, because that's totally your decision, because we, we work directly with you, you're designated.
Absolutely.
If you're okay with that. That's totally got to be something you're comfortable with, and, and we all want you to be comfortable with that, if you agree to that.
Well, and I just don't want to log it down.
And I understand, so if I have a confusion about a street that's being worked on and I'm wondering about a timeline, I know that I can call Manny and say, hey, you guys finishing that up this week? I mean, that's a conversation that doesn't require him to, we're not directing him, we're not trying to pry him out of interest.
Right. And that's the whole point, yeah. Okay, we can, we can change that.
So, could you clarify, restate that, Paul, please, sir? I got confused with that. So if it's on the agenda, we go, like if I had a question for Stan Hammerick, we go to her to-
Let's clarify it and then see if it makes sense.
Okay.
Because at the end of the day, I think Sharon could say, if you had financial questions and you come to her a couple of times and said, hey, do I need to be just going to Brad direct? If she says, yeah, go to Brad every time, that covers it for the rest of your questions, but I think it should start with authorization for her.
Look at that, and I, I think we have the utmost respect for you and, and for the hierarchy.
Okay.
But we also want to have the most mobility we can to get our questions answered without disrespecting you. Does that help at all? We'll get to see it again in two weeks.
Or four.
Or four. Yeah, I'm sorry.
We won't, yeah, we won't get to see it.
Paul, Paul, the other, one other thing with that is that we need to be respectful of Sharon's time.
Okay.
That's my way of thinking. Yeah, there's not any issue with that. I just don't want to be an impediment if, if, you know, for a simple question, and that's what we're trying to clarify, but we'll, we'll make it work better.
Point taken, though. Okay.
Okay, next item will be under Council Staff Relations. Item Number 5, it states, any conflicts arising between the staff and council will be addressed between the mayor and the city manager. I wanted to add, as well as the council member, if one is part of the conflict. I felt like it's kind of hard to, for two people that aren't part of the conflict to solve a problem for people that have a conflict. So whether it be corrective actions or just a conversation with the individual, I think it's pretty necessary for the individual to be part of the conversation. So that was, my recommendation is that we add, as well as the council member, if one is part of the conflict.
Okay, maybe I'm reading this different. When, when I read it the way it's written, I see a conflict arising between staff and council. Council is more than one council member. So I kind of agree that, first of all, city manager and mayor needs to deal with that. Beyond that, then, yeah, you might need to bring a council member or staff member into that. But just my gut reaction to that was that this is if staff and council as a whole has a conflict.
And I think you're right.
And I think to start with, with the mayor and, and the city manager is the right place to start with that conflict and then work it out from there.
You, you're assuming that's council as a whole, is that what you're saying?
The way this is written that-
And not a council member.
The way it's written, that is what it is. It's council as a whole, or at least a majority.
Clear to that.
It's not an individual, it's not a conflict between an individual council member and a staff member.
But I think even if it is, I, I still think that it's a conversation that you have with the mayor before you bring anybody else in. And, and so it's certainly not the intent to leave anybody out, but that, that was just the first step in the process.
I think I agree with that, because sometimes it's good to understand, the mayor may have a better understanding of the council's perspective or approach, and, or, or they, it may be a different perspectives and approaches that need to be resolved or understood. You know, I think certainly that this city manager I've worked with, if she has a concern or a conflict with a council member, they're going to move aggressively to bring that person in, because we can't move an organization forward if we have conflict. And so I think that would resolve itself quickly. The way it's written right now is that if council as a whole is having conflict with staff, that, that starts out with the mayor and the city manager in the initial discussions.
Mr. Mayor? As you, as you say previously, this is for, you know, future people after us, after we're gone. The only thing that I would say is, if there was a member or a couple of members that there was a conflict, that person may not be aware that it is a conflict, and therefore maybe a simple, if you made them aware of it, a simple conversation that says, Heidi, you're turning red and looking angry at that person, a simple conversation, I could smile more. So unless someone becomes aware of a conflict, they may not realize it is a conflict.
When I think that's where the mayor's responsibility comes to, come to us with those kind of things, and the city manager's responsibility to go to a staff member that might have an issue.
The, the way, the way I read this would be that the first conversation, it doesn't, I mean, we can't make all these three paragraphs long, but that the first would, would be between the mayor and the city manager, and then from there, I'm sure that, that if there's been a conflict between one of us and staff, and Sharon and Paul talk about it, then Paul's going to come and call and say, hey, Jeff, what the heck, you know, let's talk about this.
Let me expedite that process then. Let me just say, I withdraw that need and you can change it and take it out. It's, I, I had not taken into the context of council. I was thinking if one of our council members was acting like a crazy fool and giving staff grief, all of a sudden the mayor and-
That's, that's a good perspective.
And the city manager were going to go fix it. That doesn't happen anywhere. You got to have the person that's causing the problem involved or something. So taking it from your perspective, I can see that point, and I think that the point is mute, because two people couldn't fix the problem if a third was involved with that. So I think it'll fix it, so.
Everybody okay with that before we move on?
Moving on to social media, media policy. I was in favor of adding what Leander had, the, the copy that you gave me, Leander. I think everybody, everything I've read about government interaction, elected officials versus employees, does differentiate, that there's a different role that they play. And I think the sample policy that y'all put in reflected that, and if you will look in that procedure, it recommends to council how they should act. It gives them good guidance. It doesn't dictate that you're going to stay off social media, that you, it gives you good guidelines to protect yourself and the city, and I think it's worth looking into, and I think it's a good, so I'm good with that one.
But before you carry on, any other comments on social media policy?
I thought it was very clear that the city of Leander put a lot of work into that policy, because I, I thought it was pretty well done.
Okay, let's be sure to make that policy our own, if you will, and there's been some things that I've-
Get the right cities in there.
Yeah, and punctuation and other things, so.
Plagiarism is all right to a certain extent.
All right, yeah.
It's okay.
All right, moving on to Article 2, Meetings, 2.5, Presiding Officer. In the third paragraph, let's see, I had recommend that we remove, because the presiding officer conducts the meeting, it is common courtesy for the chair to take a less active role than other members of the council in debates and discussion. This practice in no way precludes the presiding officer from participating in the meeting fully and freely. I wholeheartedly believe that you're an elected official with every responsibility to every citizen that each one of us up here has, and that the board president, or chairman, or mayor should have the same conversation, should be just as active. And I recognize that this statement is just trying to protect the other people from being outweighed by the person that controls the meeting, excuse me, but I have seen this in action and have heard this referred in the past as a reason for the person sitting in that chair to hold back responses, and that's not doing justice to the people that elected them, or the body as a whole, in my opinion.
Agree.
I like the statement the way that it is, but, I, I mean, I get it. I get what, what Kevin is saying. At the same time, I, I think a good, a good leader is going to know how to balance that, and, and maybe there needs to be a little cautionary statement over the, the person presiding over the meeting to keep them from being too dominant in the meeting. I think that's what that statement's trying to do, and that's why I'm okay with it.
Are you co, okay with removing it?
Yeah, I don't think it's up to you.
I think the mayor's responsibility is to facilitate the meeting and to encourage everybody around the mayor to give your opinions. But I would know, no way in, with this policy as it is now, or with this removed, or any, I would never hesitate to give my position on, on a topic or a, an item. And so I'm, I'm good either way. I think it's a good conversation, though.
No.
I will say that you wholeheartedly give your opinion, but that has been an excuse in the past that may not, that this would eliminate the appearance of.
Okay.
And a new person coming into your position will pick this document up, or should in theory, pick this document up and read through here, and if I read that, I would take the feeling of maybe I need to take a little bit of a backseat, too. Just my opinion.
If you're okay with coming off of it, we can move on.
I'm okay with it.
Okay, great. Just seeing a room full of compromise.
Thank you, sir.
Carry on, sir.
I had requested that we add back in 3.1, oh, I'm skipping one, 2.7, suspension and amendment to rules. It had previously been removed. Basically, this provision allows us, through voting, to suspend or alter rules. This could be time a person gets to speak, any of the rules that we take, we need to move a meeting, whatever direction it needs to move. I had requested that we put that provision back in there that allows us by a majority vote to-
Supermajority.
Supermajority, yes.
Be four out of five. Are y'all with that? I've got one, two yeses down here, gentlemen?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I'm okay with it.
Great.
Item 3.1, purpose of that section, the part of mention procedure- Item 3.1, Purpose of That Section, the part of mention procedure. I felt it was kind of important to explain the overall purpose or intent of the part of mention procedure, and I'd requested that piece be added back in.
Thoughts on that?
I like it. It's a great definition.
Gentlemen? Another thing this does is it's a reminder of the body corporate principle, that majority rules, and when majority makes a decision, and that it's the body corporate's responsibility to carry on and implementation of that, so.
Then I skipped all the way to Article Four, Agenda Order. This one doesn't really have any, I don't really have a direct want or need in this one. I just wanted to make sure that council as a whole was agreeable as to the timeline for posting of agendas and the information we received to meet for the meeting. Whatever that timeline looks like, if it's Friday by 5:00, we want to have all of our information so we have all we can study, or if it's Thursday by 5:00, or whatever day council feels comfortable with, and staff feels like they can meet that deadline and it works for them. So I just wanted us in a group to have the conversation about what day, what does council need in time to look over the material, and what do you guys need so that we're all on the same page.
And ours is going to vary, probably meeting to meeting. Our goal is always to have this done by Wednesday afternoon. We have a staff meeting on Wednesday morning, and so our goal is always to have the agenda set and ready to post Wednesday afternoon. But there are things, sometimes when P and Z meetings get off a little bit, then we're waiting on some of that information to put on there. There's times where we're trying to get agreements on there, and we don't always, we can't control when those come in. So we are always going to get those done just as quick as we can. If it's a lengthy document, then we might even send that to you under separate cover, just so you'll have an opportunity to look at it. We will always get this out just as quickly as we can get it out. It's just sometimes we're waiting on others. Now, I guess the downside to that is if we don't hit this agenda, then that means that those items get delayed for two weeks until the other one. But Wednesday afternoon is always our target.
I've got a month of experience at this today, and I think that Wednesday is a very difficult day to ask for that. We have meetings every two weeks. I think, my guess is that it's hundreds of hours of staff time to prepare for a meeting when you conglomerate all of it. If the council's comfortable with an end-of-business-day Friday, that's well outside of the 72-hour realm. I know that staff will, if they can, release it prior to them, but I feel certain that y'all certainly wouldn't leave on that Friday for a next Tuesday meeting.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I think the Wednesday or Thursday are very difficult. They've got a 14-day window to prepare for meetings, and taking two days out is, really could affect the mobility of the organization, what we're able to look at.
I will say I'm completely fine with Friday as a whole. From a person, I would never change the whole city setup and council setup just for me personally. Anytime that we can get it before that Friday, if I like to sit down at work when I'm in front of a computer, I'm disconnected from my family, and I can focus on these items, go through them and really get a grasp of them. When I get them on Friday evening, I'm going into the weekend with the family and stuff, I'm busy. If I do sit down, it's on my tablet with the TV going and the kids running around and all that chaos, and I'm trying to get a grasp of it at that time. So for me personally, any, I'm fine with leaving it Friday in this policy to not make you guys feel like you've got to kick something off the agenda to get to that date. But anytime you could get it to me on even a Thursday evening is phenomenal for me.
Shouldn't we leave it with 72 hours, not the Friday, because there could be meetings that are not Tuesday at 6:30? I mean...
The other thing is...
That's just, that's our standard city council meeting night, but there could be, I mean, this would include other, it could include other things.
Maybe we leave it like it is.
So just leave it at the 72 hours.
Leave it like it is, and city staff understands what our needs are.
That's what I was going to say. I think that you've made a point, and I understand what you're saying. Sometimes the weekends are busy and tied up a family time, I get that. But I've got to say, from my experience, for the most part, we get them, you know, Wednesday evening to Thursday evening. It's been Friday before, but it's rare. I mean, it's normally.
I'm fine with leaving it like it is.
I think they've heard our concern and desire. If y'all are okay with that, we'll leave it as is and move on.
Yes.
So there's some changes made in Article Five about timing. I'm okay with the changes that were made in here. It's the fourth paragraph in Article Five. I don't know if you guys have any comments on that one?
That one, it was actually my suggestion to try to make it...
Yeah, if you want to talk on it.
To try to make it a little bit more encouraging to citizens to come and speak to their city council representatives, and give the mayor the opportunity that he may limit at his discretion.
But I feel like everybody's staring at me.
Yes, we were.
We are.
You know, I feel like that whatever we do, we need to be consistent with it. But this is, these are meetings that are held in public, not with the public. And so there is a fine line between including the public, which we all want to do. We work for them, we all know that. But also, that going on to the point with repetition, redundancy, and reinforcement of the same point over and over where that can delay our ability to conduct business. And so wherever that is, I don't know. That's where I need guidance from y'all. You're all much more experienced.
I liked the change to allowing more time, but one of the things that allows me to be flexible with that statement, however it reads, is the fact that we already agreed upon the fact that we will allow for us, as with the supermajority, to change the rules. So we've allowed ourselves the ability, if we have a crowd full of people all here to talk on one item, we can probably recognize that 30 minutes is not going to get us through that item. And then the mayor, or whoever can motion that we change the rules to allow an hour on that topic, and still set another time limit, a total time limit. So there's some things that allow me to be comfortable with changing that either way. But I do, I am okay. I do like the idea of flexibility to let people talk longer.
Where do we want to go with this?
I like the timeframe set here. I'm thinking, you know, if they appoint a spokesperson for their group, obviously they should get, that spokesperson should get more than three minutes if they're speaking for the entire group. So maybe can we put something that such spokesperson will be afforded up to 15 minutes to express comments on behalf of the group. And then Kevin's idea comes into play, too, that if we feel like it's, you know, we can always suspend those rules, we can always change that if it's an issue where they need more than the 15 minutes to express their comments.
So when you identify a spokesperson, does that eliminate everybody else's opportunity to speak? So if I come up first, I'm the spokesperson, I get 15 minutes. Does that mean none of you would get to speak for out there? Does that, I mean, how do you set that boundary of, what does identifying a spokesperson do?
Right.
How does that, so, what is, you do that for the sake of efficiency and of time. But what is put in place to make sure that that's definitive, and that after that 15 minutes...
They don't speak for me.
We're able to move on. Yeah, I mean, I think we need to be real careful with that. We've asked them to do that in the past, is the way I read it. I don't know if it's been done or not.
And I think it's worked, but you're right. It didn't have to work. I mean, what we've done in the past is if everybody has the same point, we say, you know, if you want to, you all have the same concerns, you want to point someone to get those out. Otherwise, you're listening to that over and over.
Well, and in another place in our policies, it suggests that, you know, if there's an issue where there's pro and con, that you take turns between the two sides.
I support the way the city has redlined it in the stuff that they have, the way they have worded it. I support this, and I'm comfortable with the fact that we can change it if necessary through supermajority.
Other thoughts?
I'm good with it here.
Let's move on.
Article number one, under that same paragraph, they changed the beginning of the meeting to calling of the item. I'm supportive of that. I don't think that really...
So let's talk about that for a moment, because these are important for the person that presides over the meeting. If we set five minutes, I want to make sure that y'all are absolutely going to be comfortable with that.
Five minutes on...
What they're saying is you have to fill out your speaker card five minutes before the item's called on the agenda. That's what the wording's changed to, correct?
It is.
Okay. So I want to make sure y'all are absolutely comfortable, and then I want to have your support. If somebody walks up waving a card after we call that agenda item up, it's very hard to tell somebody, you've missed your opportunity to speak in public. I understand that we need to have order, and we need to be able to flow through the process, but that is a very easy statement to put in a manual. It's very hard to enforce when you're sitting here, but I want to make sure that I'm going to have your 110% support as a council if I do that.
Let me explain, because I was the one that asked for that change, is because I don't want to limit people from being able to speak, and somebody that might show up, because we have people that get here 15 minutes late because they know that we're going to do stuff at the first and that doesn't pertain to what they want to. But what I was trying to get away from is there's been times when we have large crowds that, or an issue comes up, and a person's at our meeting that the item really doesn't pertain to them, they didn't come planning to speak on that, but then they want to jump on the bandwagon, and that just can create a lot of extra time. I mean, if somebody's here that's passionate about something, that they made a trip down here because of an item on the agenda, I would hate to ever cut them off. But that's why I said five minutes.
I'm okay with that. So what is the five minutes? What does delivery mean? Is that delivered in this chair? Is that delivered to a department head out in the audience that waits till we call the item up and then waves it? What is delivery, and what is that five minutes? What does delivery of the speaker card constitute?
So if I'm correct, what you were trying to do was address allowing more people ample time to get their, you were trying to allow for more conversation, correct?
Well, no, what I was trying to do is make sure that if somebody made a trip down here, because the way it's said before is that it had to be turned in prior to the start of the meeting. And what I was saying is if somebody is running late or something, they can still fill out a card as long as it's before we start on that item. But for somebody that, say they came here for item three, and now item five comes along, and they want to get up and talk on it, just so to keep it from, we've had people before that come to our meetings that are excessive in the number of times they want to get up and talk, and I think possibly limiting some of that.
I appreciate that. I'm asking, as the mayor, could we consider the staff creating wording on, we need to define what delivery of the speaker card is?
So can I make a suggestion?
Delivery to the city secretary? Yes, please.
Because I would never want to sit in your position and not have an affirmative
I need to know what that is.
Standpoint, exactly. So in an effort to try to allow as many people to speak without going past, just because they start hearing other people's comments and they get themselves worked up, maybe it should be, the blue card has to be delivered at the mayor's request prior to opening that item. So in other words, you can make the request, like tonight, we had an incident where someone had not filled out a card, and he wanted to speak on item. So when you go to open an item, you could say, do we have anybody that would like to fill out a blue card, or would like to speak on this item at this time, they need to fill out a blue card prior to opening. That way we get those cards submitted, or something along those lines, that allow them to submit it prior to.
Okay. What I'd like to do is, I'm not going to invite them to fill out a card. I think that that'll be written in the policy. And what the policy should be, what I would prefer, is that if the speaker card is not received before the item is called and announced in the public meeting, that is the drop dead for speaker cards. That gives people an opportunity that are here late. We want to invite them, but as Jeff Robinson said, they can't get stirred up because somebody else has said this or that and want to piggyback on it. There has to be some type of formal protocol for when the drop dead moment is for that specific speaker card process.
I agree. Fair with that.
Can we just say no individual may address the council without submitting a speaker card before the item is called?
Sure. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
That gives us the tools we need. We're inviting public feedback. We want to hear what they have to say. They're our customers, but there also has to be a way for us to conduct business in an orderly manner. That would be great. Clear as mud?
Got it.
Okay.
Number four is something that's highlighted through here, shall and will. This one is, I believe staff has comments on this, that it was remove specific language, and shall and will do have some legal connotations. Shall represents an obligation to, and will is more of an intent to or a want to. I think staff's comment is, the changing shall to will in this one is changing a legal statement that they pulled directly from a document. Is that correct, Sharon?
I think that's exactly what that is.
Isn't that open record, sir?
I'm fine with leaving that particular one at shall, considering we're quoting something directly from another source. And then we get all the way down to the last one. Bear with me, I'm sorry, guys. A lot of pieces of papers to...
I think it's 6/6, page 26 is the next one.
Yep.
6/6. And this one, this one's not mine, so if somebody else wants to speak on this one, this is removing, in the event serving board members, commission, or committee membership become party or criminal, or legal matter, the member will be removed. Somebody else wants to speak on that one, I'm not sure who that one was.
We just removed that one. I think that was a concern, a couple of concerns. So that was one we had added in, and we just took it out.
Okay. That's all I had. If someone else has items...
Is there a reason we took that out?
Mr. Zellers, do you want to, I mean, talk about that one?
It gets really sticky when you have somebody that may be accused, but they're not necessarily, well, they're not guilty until they're found guilty. And so we felt the language that was in there that gave y'all discretion, to remove somebody for no cause whatsoever would cover that, if we, if y'all felt that was serious enough to do that. So.
Everybody okay with that? Removal of that item?
The, in reading that one, the idea that I had, and I realize it created an issue, was not removing, but was suspending until, you know, the resolution. But then I know they can leave you short on...
That's exactly. We were concerned about quorums on that, so.
I believe the process that our country has in place is that people are innocent until proven guilty. You know, a legal matter could be something as a traffic citation.
Right, no, I agree.
So I think we need to be really careful, and I think the community, if they want somebody to resign or to stop serving, they'll make that known very, very clear.
And then I'm hoping somebody made a note of which one we were going to come back to, because I didn't, didn't anybody note on theirs which one we were going to revisit?
Yeah, we did, and we also go back and listen to the...
So we had one or two items that we weren't able to find a resolution on, so y'all can ponder that, and we can circle back around in a month when it comes back, or...
Can somebody note which ones was worth...
I think we've got that noted. If we can't find a resolution on those two, as a team, I'm going to ask that we leave them as is the next time that we go over these, that way that we can put this to bed and carry on. If we don't make changes to those two items, it's still a better document than it was when we started.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Any closing comments on that, ma'am?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item 10 on the agenda is future agenda items. Staff, first, anybody from staff?
Yes, sir.
Counsel? I do have one. Madam City Manager. I'd like the next 60 days or so, or as soon as possible, for the council to discuss and consider action relating to contingency planning for fire and emergency response services, specifically related to our services continuing with an agreement with the SD3, but also, and very importantly, protection arrangements outside of that contract with the SD3.
Yes, sir.
Like we need to be evaluating alternatives, evaluating all alternatives moving forward.
Will do.
Other items from council?
No, sir.
Okay, item 13 on the agenda, and the most popular one always is adjournment. Motion on the floor by Kevin Cleveland, second by Mayor Pro Tim Wilder. Indicate yea or nay at this time. Council's adjourned at 8:52. Thank you for your... Council's adjourned at 8:52. Thank you for your.